Okay, it's eight thirty, so I will call this meeting to order on Saturday morning, November sixteenth at eight thirty AM. We'll start with a roll call. Mayor Protem Hines, here. Councilmember Scott Rose, here. Councilmember Snyder, here. Councilmember Gordon, here. Councilmember Martinez, here. And Councilmember Tanner Rose, here. Next, we'll have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Next, we have city council comments. Any comments from the city council members?
I just wanted to thank the people that came out to the meeting last night, yesterday afternoon. It was very informative. I know a lot of items came up that I think are new to some of the members of council that showed up. And for those councilmembers that didn't come, we definitely have a communication issue. We have developers trying to get ahold of councilmembers, and they're being told not to talk to councilmembers. We have developers trying to get ahold of neighborhoods, and they're being told there's not meetings when there are meetings. And so it was very informative that there's a wedge, and a lot of people are upset at council, and I think people are starting to realize it's not always the council's fault. So with that, I appreciate the people coming and continuing to speak their voices. I know that we're trying to get better.
And for clarification, that was the meeting that we held. It was a town hall meeting that we held with citizens specifically of Lakeside Estates, but anyone could come to talk about the cover bridge development that was happening around them. So that's the meeting that we were having.
Yeah, we're going to figure this out.
Next item we have is public comment. I've got two people signed up for public comment. Robin Sutton.
Robin Sutton, five oh five east. I'm not a morning person, but I'm here. That's my one day to sleep in. So I want to tell City Manager Jones, I hope his mother's okay because he had to go to Houston, and he must have had a long day driving to Houston and getting back here for this morning meeting, so he was not available for the three o'clock yesterday. I do hope your mother's doing well, because I have a sick mother myself. So my concern today is this Cottonwood Creek Development Corp., and that's why I was here early. It was founded on June twenty-seventh. There has not been a discussion about it until today. I want to know how there's been funding without council vote to buy property. I'm concerned that we have three councilmembers as the board on River Creek and Cottonwood. I think that's a conflict of interest. I think there shouldn't be councilmembers on that board. They should be nominated, and they should be unable to vote on these things. Because you made, y'all made decisions for that development or that corporation, and now you're going to have the ability to vote on it. And I think y'all should recuse yourselves and not be able to vote. Thank you for your time.
Next, I have Kyle Lovinggood.
Kyle Lovinggood, one zero five Lauren White. So I just had a couple of things I wanted to mention today. When I started coming to these meetings a while back, my first thing that got my attention was the park on Bushy Creek, the way that was handled. That was the first reason I spoke. So as I've been observing and watching and coming to the meetings and, you know, observing how things go down, some of the things that concern me the most are the city debt. You know, I see we keep spending all this money, and yes, we're supposed to make revenue down the way, but, you know, we have citizens here who pay all the taxes, and as the taxes start increasing, you know, we all want to live here. I love Hutto. I enjoy it. That's why I come to these meetings. That's why I'm here. And it's just concerning the amount of debt that we're occurring over time, the amount of debt we've already had, and the lack of strategy that I hear of how we're going to pay this back, how we're going to go about getting things done for, making sure we take care of the debt, make sure that down the road, twenty, thirty years from now, we're not in a huge pit of debt. And that's probably one of the things that concerns me the most. And when I went back and watched some of the older council meetings back in two thousand seventeen, Tom Hines, Scott, both of y'all were speaking to that point that when you're spending citizens' money, that it's very important to understand, you know, where it's going, where it's coming from, who's spending it, and to tell the citizens, you know, why it's important that we know where their money's being spent and that they spend their hard-earned money here for the taxes. And I think we need to get back to that. I think that needs to be our number-one priority, because the citizens are who, you know, who make this city go around. And we know that all y'all make the decisions to help, you know, that process. And I think y'all need to go back and make that your number-one priority. As far as, if councilmembers, you know, when we vote y'all in here, we're expecting y'all to come in and do it for the best interest of the citizens. And when we're talking about debt, I feel like that's an area that we're not one-hundred percent, you know, focused on. I understand that we're going to have to acquire some debt to get some things done. I mean, I understand that. But we need to be responsible about the way we go about this, and that's very concerning to me. The other last thing, two other items. So when we have public comments, when items are presented here, they need to be presented, and then we need to allow the citizens to speak, not the other way around. I think the items need to come first. We need to present them. The city needs to present whatever items were coming, and then the citizens should be able to comment on those after they've been educated on the subject matter. Because I feel like we do that in reverse, and then the citizens come up here, and they're not fully educated on what we're getting ready to speak about. That happens a lot. Also, I feel like there's a lot, oftentimes, the agenda items listed on the agenda are not well-described. They're very vague, and so you can come in here not knowing what exactly is going to be spoke about, and then we get in here, and it's something simple, but it wasn't spelled out there. So the citizens can't really know what they're coming into ahead of time. And so then, at the last minute, y'all are already discussing it.
Three minutes is up.
So I just think that's important. Thank you, guys. Have a good morning.
So I think we wanted to move a couple items around.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we move seven B up before the rest of the agenda items, and I'd also like to add in that motion a table six A and also table seven A until the twenty-first.
I'd like to ask, why move the stuff around?
One, because I think we need to have the work session before we take any other votes, become educated on what we're voting on, and the other ones, I believe, they're not quite ready to present yet.
So by moving seven B up, that makes us more educated when we discuss it?
Seven B is the whole work session, so it'll be able to answer a lot of the questions and get a lot of information out there on the whole project before we...
I'm not okay with six A. I think that needs to be addressed.
Okay, hold on, because, well, I guess you seconded that motion, because...
Yeah, seconded. So I'd like to amend it to just move seven B up and not table six A.
Okay, so what, hold on, so I got a motion to move seven B to up and table six A and... What was the other one?
Seven A.
Six A and... And then your amended motion is to remove...
Move seven B up.
And not table...
And not table six A or seven A.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second, because I'd like to at least discuss them before we just table them out of the gate.
We could still table them after we discuss them, right?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we will vote on the amended motion to move seven B and not table six A and seven A. Call for vote? Let's move.
Yes. Mayor DeGaulle.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hines.
Aye.
Councilmember Scott Rose.
Aye.
Councilmember Mike Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Peter Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Patty Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Tanner Rose.
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero. So now we're voting on the amended motion to just move seven B up and not table six A and seven A. Call for vote?
Mayor DeGaulle.
Aye.
Mayor Protem, Tom Hines.
Aye.
Councilmember Scott Rose.
Aye.
Councilmember Mike Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Peter Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Patty Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Tanner Rose.
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero. So now we will go into seven B, which is a work session on, work session to discuss City of Hutto Sports, Health, and Entertainment District and Perfect Game.
Mayor, what I wanted to do is to give an opportunity publicly just to thoroughly discuss and review the deal mechanics. I know that we've been working on this deal for some time. We've had a lot of discussion ourselves in executive session, but my hope here is to have this to be a thorough discussion about just the overall deal mechanics and answer any questions that anybody have. My hope is that this is a conversation for educational purposes more than anything else. And so I've asked Dan if he could kick us off and just provide an overview of the project and the site plan and all of that, and then have John then delve into the financial aspects. And then we've got bond counsel here at Greenbough Trial, who is one of the premier bond councils in the country who deal with these issues, but to have them talk about our structure overall, and then just answer any questions after, you know, they've had an opportunity to kind of lay out what the deal is, and then take it from there. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Dan.
All right, thanks, Otis. Good morning. Thank you, guys, for taking a Saturday morning to do this. I hope we can have a productive session. Before I jump in, I just wanted to first say thank you for the opportunity to work in your city. I will tell you that we've worked all over the country, several municipalities that we've done public-private partnerships with, and you have one of the most, I would say, actually the most competent staff led by Otis that we've ever worked with. And I'm not exaggerating when I say that. The experience that we've had here is not only unique, but refreshing. Your team has done an amazing job of structuring a deal that absolutely looks out for the best interest of the city. They have taken extreme measures to mitigate any risk that the city might take and maximize the financial outcome. We've worked with many municipalities that have reluctantly entered public-private partnerships. They've given it a half effort, and the result has not been as productive as it otherwise would be. Your team has made the decision that you're going to do this as a city, and they have jumped in full bore, and I'm certain that the result here is going to be incredible. We're issuing bonds, of course. The team has done a great job of mitigating the city's exposure and risk to those bonds, and I'm confident, based on the interest that we have from tenants in this project, that these bonds will pay off early, and it will result in a significant financial windfall to you as a municipality, and we look forward to that day. With that, we'll jump into the site plan, and I guess this is an interactive discussion, so feel free to ask any questions that you might have.
Is there any way we can zoom that so...
Yeah, it's pretty small. We really only need, there you go. So to orient you, this is the north side of seventy-nine. And this is a property that is located to the west of the newly relocated one-thirty-two. One-thirty-two, the north-south arterial on the east side of the property is being moved approximately four hundred feet east in order to orient the baseball fields east-west as opposed to north-south. We talked about that briefly in executive session. This plan contains approximately six hundred thousand square feet of retail, restaurant, entertainment uses and office. The plan includes approximately eight hundred residential units and approximately five hundred hotel rooms.
Are those numbers including the piece that's south of seventy-nine that's not on here?
Yes. We anticipate accommodating a convention center, approximately one hundred and eighty thousand square feet as, a convention and event center that's approximately one hundred and eighty thousand square feet as planned. We are in discussions with a hospital right now that would purchase approximately eighteen acres south of seventy-nine. We're having very productive discussions with a charter school. There's also been discussions with medical office and regular office users. The entertainment uses include the surf wave that you can see about a third of the way on the west side of the property. We are in discussions with a hotel that develops, usually or mostly develops in Hawaii. The goal would be to create a beachfront-type atmosphere on the surf pool. We're also, we have a letter of intent signed with a Topgolf-type use that is there in the southwest quadrant of the plan there, and a large restaurant that would sit on the lake that you see in the northwest quadrant of the plan. We do anticipate residential over the retail on the main street here, and if you, do we have a pointer? The, if you go just to the, if you enter the main drive there...
Oh, that's not good.
Wrong button.
If you enter the project on the center drive there, the main drive, and then you head east and go around that first roundabout, that area to the east of the main drive is what we would view as our Phase One A. That's the area we will focus on first. The area just to the north of the convention center, the convention center hotel, which is around that second roundabout, is what we call the, what we would call our live district. That is where we will focus a significant amount of entertainment, outdoor uses, what we would call makers market. Our goal is to accommodate as many local makers of things. We've, you know, there's a gentleman here, for example, that makes leather hats, and, you know, our goal would be to accommodate as many of those individuals as possible in our makers market. We would have pop-up vendors that sponsor Perfect Game, you know, bat maker, baseball glove maker, that type of thing. And then we'll have a gathering area in the live district with a large TV screen where you can watch, you know, sports events, and they will gather for their awards ceremonies in that area as well. We are having productive discussions right now with an all-suites hotel that would act as the convention center hotel, over three hundred rooms. We're very excited about that. And then we are also having discussions with another hotel here for a one hundred and twenty-room facility right at the main entrance. We think those can all be part of the first phase. That's a general discussion of the site plan. I would tell you that the discussions with tenants have really gone well. We're ahead of schedule here relative to, versus any other project that we've developed. We've never gotten interest this early on. We've got signed letters of intent already, and we, as a company, are barely sixty days in, so we're really excited about how the project's going. If there are no questions on the plan, I'll turn it over to John.
Got one question, north of the main entrance. It seems like there's been a change there, right by the F-four ball field, if you will?
Oh, the drive, you mean?
Right.
Removing the drive?
Right. We had the drive next to the neighborhood with the green space between the drive and the ball field, and now it looks like the green space and the drive flipped. Is that accurate?
Yes. You mean removing the drive, the drive next to the neighborhood?
Well, the drive, it seemed like the last plan we saw, the drive was next to the neighborhood, and then there was a green space between the drive to the east.
Right, right.
And we talked about flipping them, and you guys said we don't even have to have the drive, to which we said, that's great, but now it's flipped, but the drive's still there. So is there going to be a drive there, or...
I think that's, you know, you mentioned communication earlier. That's a communication problem on our side. The drive can be removed. We dropped the ball on that. That's my fault. We'll make that change on the next version of the plan. Thanks for the reminder.
Sure. And just in overall scheduling, because I've never been a part of a project this big on such a tight timeline, what is your contingency plan in case we have a wet spring, let's say, and we get bogged down? I mean, how confident are you all that this is going to get, the ball field, everything's going to be done by Memorial Day of 2021?
It's a very tight schedule, and, you know, we've had these discussions with Perfect Game. They don't publish their schedule until...
July.
Yeah, July. So they will decide in July whether it's going to be Memorial Day 2020, or they're going to do perhaps a Fourth of July event for their opening. It all depends on the weather, but there's a significant amount of dirt work that has to be done here in order to prep the fields. And the schedule that we have currently does not allow for much, I think maybe a week and a half of weather delay, so it's very tight.
Week and a half over the next fifteen, eighteen months?
No, 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 until July.
Of this year?
Yes.
Is that just regular business hours of dirt being moved, or can people expect to have dirt moving at nine o'clock at night?
I don't think that they intend with the neighborhood there, I don't think they intend to work late nights. But, you know, that's a discussion we may need to have with the neighborhood, you know, depending on Perfect Games. They're pretty adamant about Memorial Day of 2020, so it could be a...
Twenty-twenty-one or twenty-two?
I'm sorry, yeah, twenty-twenty-one. So it could be necessary to have a discussion with the neighborhood about a few nights.
If I may offer a suggestion, what I have found is it's always better to have the discussion now as a worst-case scenario than until...
Wait until the last minute.
The crap's hitting a fan, and then you come in and say, if you don't say this, because what I think what really bothers people is they keep hearing, just in general, if you don't do whatever, this is going to fail or that'll happen. And so if you have it early on, I think people are more receptive to that than, or more receptive than, than maybe, hey, starting tomorrow, we need to move dirt at two in the morning, and you guys are going to have a problem with that.
Got it. Thank you. We'll do that.
Thanks.
I had one question on the, you've got a dog park, playground, soccer fields, those kind of things. Are those publicly accessible to anyone in the city? Those would be available to anyone?
Yes.
I guess it's okay for the public to ask a question?
No, no, this is a council work session, so...
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
If there are no other questions, Mr. Mayor, I'll be happy to proceed. We can come back if other questions arise.
Let me just, for a jump into the, I mean, Dan, you might want to make yourself available afterwards in the lobby...
Of course, y'all be happy to.
To answer any questions, if people from the public have any of Dan directly, that might be helpful.
We'd be happy to.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, John Hanson with IRR Corporate and Public Finance. We are the developers' public finance advisor. Just a brief comment, since we'll be talking about contemplated matters related to a bond financing, just want to mention that we are the developers' public finance advisor. We are a registered municipal advisor, and in some instances serve as a city's municipal advisor, but we're not your municipal advisor. PFM is your municipal advisor, so just wanted to clarify that on the front end. There is a set of disclosures that I'm required to provide as part of that that's in your packet. If you have any questions on that, happy to run over that. From a conceptual plan of finance standpoint, just want to set the stage a little bit for how the process is expected, subject to council's action in all respects related to the financing. But an overview, first is your staff, an entire bond finance team, which includes your bond counsel, your financial advisors, a bond underwriter that's been hired by the city, and other legal counsel advisors to the process have been working hard on developing a land development bond, what we are calling a Series 2019 bond issue that will be before you next Thursday evening, those particular bond documents. But this work session allows us to talk, really lay the full framework for what that financing is, has been teed up to look like. These two binders sitting in front of me represent a very large body of work that that team has been working on in earnest over the last approximately two weeks. So it's been a very efficient process getting to where we are, and we look forward to talking about that overall contemplated financing, and then again, requesting action next Thursday evening. Yeah, absolutely, with respect to whether we're talking about the Series 2019 or the Series 2020 financing, those are nonrecourse financings to the city, and we'll be talking more details about that in just a moment.
Let me just say, the effective structure is the same structure that the council has approved previously with PIT deals we've done. Effectively, the city is not taking any risk financially. The bonds are not being issued by the city, so the debt will not be the issuance of the citizens' debt. This debt is contemplated on being issued by the Arizona Industrial Development Authority, and what the city would be doing is putting in place a PIT in the TURS district and agreeing to take revenue from that district and to convey it to the local government corp, who will then convey it to the bondholder. But it will not be debt that's on the books or that the city would be financially liable for in any way. And our bond counsel will be talking about that overall structure when John wraps up, but I think that's just important for folks to know, that our financial advisors and bond counsel and myself and all the other lawyers have been all involved in this structure for some time, so it has been done in accordance with the other deal structures we've done.
Preconditions to those land development bonds have been substantially completed other than actions required of the council, creating the PIT district, the TURS reinvestment zone, and then your overall approval of the bond documents are yet to be required, but all the other necessary preconditions for the project have been completed for the financing. So while that financing is underway, and I'll lay out a schedule of the expectation with respect to that Series 2019 financing in just a moment, we'll be continuing, Dan and his team, we'll be continuing the pre-development planning and leasing efforts. We expect to close the land development bonds in December. That will allow the LGC, the slide says city, it's really LGC, acquires the remaining land. City's reimbursed for any land purchases that it's... any land purchases that it's made so far. We expect that to be completed roughly by year-end. The bond documents say within 45 days of bond closing to give us a little bit of extra margin there, but expected by year-end. And then we will continue building the project, creating, bringing this critical mass of leases or ground leases, land sales, as the case may be, for a Series 2020 financing, and then we'll proceed hopefully within about six months or so, maybe a little bit less than that, will be before you're talking about the Series 2020 bond financing, which will be a larger bond financing to implement the public improvements, other improvements for the project, and refinance these 2019 bonds. In just a moment, as Otis mentioned, Karen Kennard and Frank Jones with Greenberg Trial will come up and run through this slide in a little more detail, which outlines the overall structure for the bonds. I just wanted to show it to you preliminarily here, and we'll come right back to the slide, so you'll have the details on all the agreements and what the overall structure is that Otis just overviewed. It's a nonrecourse of the city, issued by the Arizona Industrial Development Authority. From an economic standpoint, I'm a numbers guy, so I'll run through the information with respect to that. The anticipated bond timeline, the Arizona IDA will be considering a resolution to approve the bond issue next Wednesday, November 20th. As I mentioned, we'll be back for LGC and city action related to the bond issue Thursday evening, the 21st. The bond underwriters indicated, based on that schedule, that they will be able to price the bonds on December 11th. That's a Wednesday. We expect bond closing the following day, and then land purchases, any that are teed up immediately, to be completed on the 13th. As I mentioned, we've got 45 days to, to complete those land purchases. The Series 2019 bond, nonrecourse bond, taxable because of the early stage of the financing. The estimated coupon rate is 9%. Should be a very short time period that that bond is outstanding, but it is taxable.
Let me chat a little bit about that, John. You know, the, I wanna call your attention to the coupon rate of 9%. That's a fairly aggressive rate in the market right now. We, in that generally, these kinds of instruments that's going in the market right now, some of them are being priced at, you know, 10 and a half to 11%. And this is a bond that's being issued by Industrial Development Authority, but it is considered a non-rated taxable bond. The reason it is non-rated is because the city is not pledging its full faith and credit behind it. The only collateral for this deal will be the land that is acquired, as well as potential future revenues, and also, and that includes future revenues from the tenants that would be on site. One of the things that Legacy has done in some of the other shopping centers, you know, throughout the country, is they charge what's called, I call it a merchant's fee, but effectively, it says that, you know, "We're gonna create so much excitement within this particular development that they will charge a additional fee for anyone who buys goods within that development, given this development is gonna be attracting people from all over the country." You know, most of the folks who'll be visiting this site, and particularly in this site, will, you know, probably be from outside the country, I mean, at least outside of the, the city, meaning outside of the city. So this is a national attraction site. So that additional fee amount will, will also be going towards securitizing this revenue. So, so when a bondholder sees it in the market, what he's seeing is, he's seeing an opportunity to buy debt for an exciting project. I call it like the Disney of, of baseball, is what I've referred to it as. And as a part of being in an environment like the Disney of baseball, you, you know, those goods and services are often a little bit more expensive. So in that respect, the city is not putting its full faith and credit behind it, which means that, you know, it's non-rated, is also non-rated to part and parcel because it's a special assessment that we back in a portion of this debt, and special assessment in the market is always non-rated, and you guys are aware that the other deals that we've done has been non-rated as well. But I just wanted to call that to your attention, just so you understand.
Thank you for those clarifications. There will be capitalized interest in a surplus fund created as part of the financing. In, in the event that it takes more time to refinance the Series 2019 bonds, but that's not anticipated to be needed, that just creates additional flexibility on the part of the project. Happy to answer any other questions about the Series 2019. I will talk more about the revenues that are pledged, contemplated to be pledged, subject to council's approval. But I do want to overview a little bit about what we're anticipating on the horizon with respect to the Series 2020 bond issue. Revenues have been projected first initially by us as the development team, looking at site plan, the square footages of the individual components, what those revenues are expected to generate. As part of the bond issue process, a third party was engaged by the city, an expert in creating feasibility studies, or what they call bond revenue study for the project, opining with their own opinion with respect to what those, what those are.
Let me, let me comment there for a second. So what's required when you issuing, this is sort of part of the high finance, the public finance, when you're issuing these things in a securities market, is buyers of bond feel more comfortable when they get a purely third-party objective opinion about revenue streams. So here, first what occurred was, we got the proposal from a developer in terms of projected revenues, based off his tenant mix and everything else. Our, our financial advisors reviewed their projections, got comfortable with them, but then we went and hired a third-party entity to come in and do an, an evaluation to, to, you know, make sure that they're comfortable with the revenue projections as well. That is required on all transactions. We've done that on all the other PID, PID structures that we've done as well. It's just supportive taking it to market. So that, that, that has occurred here.
So where's that report?
Jess, you should be making that report available to the council in, in their packets or something. That, that needs to be included. This, today hopefully is the conference, is this conversation, and then all these things need to be included in their package, so they get that and review that way before they're asked to take action.
Councilman, I'll be reviewing some highlights of that report for you this morning in just a moment, and then the full report is, will be made available.
It's, it's things like that that I think are bothering me, is the report's done, you're gonna talk about them. I'd kinda like to have seen the report a day earlier, or two days early, so that maybe I had a question for you on the report while you're talking about it. And I know we here, we're gonna get this stuff, but I can tell you, my personal opinion, the information is so slow that there's votes coming up and votes that have happened, and we're still waiting on information from the summer that hasn't come up yet. And so if you guys can help push that along for the council, some of us have some questions that we just can't seem to get answered.
I think he's got, he's prepared to talk a little bit about it in his presentation. You can continue.
I just don't want a little bit. I want a lot of it.
No, you got, you'll see his presentation if I finish.
The expected proceeds from the 2020 bond issue, very preliminary still, of course, but this is what is helping inform and develop the plans for the project. A host of revenue streams are delineated here, which I'll go into in a couple of slides in more detail with respect to. But the subtotal of non-state incentives, so local incentives, $147 million, which has a whole host of components. Again, I'll, I'll go into more detail with that. Then the state program with respect to a qualified convention center and convention center hotel require an important piece of the capital stack, approximately $70 million for a sum total of nearly $220 million. These are preliminary. The taxability needs to be fully analyzed. We're, and the Series 29 is a taxable bond because of the early stage we're in. We do expect large portions of the financing in 2020 to be tax exempt, but we have a lot of work to do to develop the overall taxability approach for the bonds. More to come on that as, as we pull that together. From a uses side, we have the following matching, the projected $220 million worth of Series 2020 bond capacity. We have uses that will include the refinance of the Series 2019 bonds, the land and carry costs, ball fields, net of a contribution of $42 million, site work and power line relocation collectively, approximately $60 million. We have $40 million set aside for the convention center, $30 million for the, the keynote wave feature, aquatic attraction feature, and other vertical and contingency totaling $220 million.
And so I'll go back again. When can I get the data behind this to understand how these numbers were generated? Because all I ever see is the high level, and I have no idea where these came up, how they were created, or what the basis is for what they are. I just have this $220 million box with a bunch of numbers, but nothing backing it. So I don't know who has it, but if I could get it at some point, I've been asking for a month now for this, and whether it comes from you, whether it comes from the city, I don't care at this point. I just want it. So if you've got it, great. If the city has it, great. I'm assuming both of you have it. So if anyone can share it with us, because I haven't seen it, it would be nice.
Well, we'll be talking about some more of that in just a moment. The overall revenue streams are described in, in this chart. So a couple of charts previously, we talked about the capacity of each one of these individual revenue streams. A part of what Karen and Frank will be discussing about the Series 2019 is an inter-local agreement between the city and the local government corporation, which takes revenues generated by the project when they're generated, pledges them over to the local government corporation. For the Series 2019 issue, there are a set of four revenues that are immediately within the control of the city, the city sales tax increment, city ad valorem increment, city hotel occupancy tax, and PID assessments that will be created once we have the PID district formed, that at the levels described will be pledged both as collateral for the Series 2019 financing, and then once we refinance with the Series 2020, will be available for that bond issue.
Okay, here's where I start getting some questions. So when we say 100% of the city, 7% hotel occupancy tax, that sounds to me like it's all hotel tax in the city limits of hotel.
Solely, these revenues are solely within the project boundary.
Okay, so it's not, so it's just in that project? Okay, the sales tax part, this is a thing I've been bringing up now for a couple meetings. I think we're gonna have to see at some point before we start borrowing money to the tune we're talking about borrowing, the way this stuff is set up for our rollback tax. So one thing I learned is that as you increase your sales tax revenues in the city, it's gonna put pressure on the city mandatorily, have to lower their rollback rate. And as that rate goes down, then we take, take in less of a percentage from our people. So that's, generally, that's a good thing. The more you can sell, the better. The problem is, is when you, when you do that, you're causing the city to take in less revenue, and that's offset by the increased sales tax. But when we give away 75% of the sales tax, it creates a negative cash flow. And so I've had this run a couple of times. I mean, from the city attorney's standpoint, I don't know how to get the spreadsheet out to the entire council without a walking quorum, but I've had, I've had people make the spreadsheet for five years. And you can play with it, and you increase the sales tax, the tune we're talking about, and the people will be excited to know that there's a projection where our rollback rate could go from 63 cents to 48 cents in five years. That's how significant of a decrease it's gonna put pressure. And that 48 cents is with the maximum state rollbacks increase each year. The problem is, is all this property tax is such a less amount coming in. We're gonna need the sales tax to offset that, but if we give away 75% of it...
Let me, let me answer that. So our legal counsel that I've asked to look at this issue is with Greenberg Trial. Actually, for TERS, any revenues that are conveyed through TERS are exempt from your rollback rate, therefore that would not apply in assistance. This is the same scenario that we did here at the co-op. So that, that effect would not take place because the revenue would be flowing through the TERS, and therefore it would not. I think, Carol, we talked about the new law that doesn't take place yet, and, and that we would be operating under those same guidelines, which means all of that, all of the sales tax, all of the revenue that flows through the TERS will be exempt. And so we would not have a scenario that you're describing.
Can you, when you come up, can you help show us that? Because I can tell you, from the county assessor's standpoint, they're going to, it's gonna count against us in their eyes. And so what I don't wanna do is, the city's still grappling with a gigantic water problem due to a decision that was made years ago. And so my biggest fear is, is we get something wrong, and we find out about it in 18 months, and then we have no way to get out of it. And not that I'm distrusting anybody, but the county's the one that's doing the assessments.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Well, and the biggest worry that I've got is, you know, we've been telling people the more retail and business we bring in, the lower their taxes can be, right? And so we're hearing, under one scenario, that's true, we could be lowering their taxes, but then we could be hurting ourselves if, if what Councilman Snyder is saying is that if, if it isn't exempt, right? If it is exempt, then we're not gonna be able to lower our taxes on our citizens. And so then they're gonna be asking us, "Why did we put this half-billion project in here if my taxes aren't gonna go down?" So that's, that's the questions I'm getting. That's the questions I'm having. And so that's what I really kinda wanna understand is, how is this gonna help us lower the taxes on our citizens, on the individuals, on the homes, and help offset that? Because what I've been saying all along is, we need to bring more business in so that we can lower the taxes on the citizens.
Hey, let me, let me answer that real quick for you. The 75% portion of it that will be used to build public infrastructure, it will be exempt from the rollback rate. Therefore, therefore you won't have that scenario. The, the additional 25% that will flow to the city, I believe it's like 60-something million dollars, if I can recall, that will not be, and that portion over the time will go to reduce the rollback rate. But Bill, you, you, you're a city attorney, you need a comment here. I believe that's in the TERS statute, correct?
That's correct. Counselor, we, I think we'll go over that. We'll show you some spreadsheets and explain that to you as part of the process. But there are some exemptions, exceptions and exemptions that, that what you stated don't apply across the board. And one of them is revenue coming out of a TERS. So I think we'll go into that, and certainly we can get you any spreadsheets out of city finance that'll show you the result of it.
We need to make double, double, triple sure, because we had an issue with our sales tax calculations this year. And so that was only a nickel in rate. And, and again, I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I'm just telling you what the people who send out the bills each year are saying. And so as long as we've got it, and there's, you know, 50 people say it's okay, then I guess it's okay. But if there's a question, you know, major corporations, I mean, you can look up Windstream, for example. It's a major corporation that did a spinoff of assets, and some lawyers got it wrong. And now Windstream's bankrupt. And that's all because some lawyers got it wrong. And so I wanna make sure that my job is to protect the citizens and look out for them. And so, not knocking you guys, your job is to develop property and get us to borrow money. These people over here, their job is to get us to borrow money. Everybody wants us to borrow money, because if we don't borrow money, there's a bunch of people in the street that don't make, that don't make money. So I just wanna make sure when we're doing this, the, the one interest that I'm here to protect is taxpayers, and everybody else has their own interests they're protecting. As long as they all line up, I'm on board. But as soon as, to do that, we're gonna have to start getting some information. So it sounds like spreadsheets are coming. The city manager's very excited about the project. The council's very excited. The people are very excited. We just wanna make sure that we're not all having to work part-time jobs to help pay for this in 10 years.
Let me, don't respond to that, John. Let me handle that. So first, all of us who are on it, who work for the city, all of my staff and everyone here on this diocese... here on this diocese, I think everybody has the best interest of the citizens at heart. Second, we've got very good lawyers. They do this over the country, they've produced great results other places. I've got confidence in their work, their quality, their financial advisors' quality and work. I mean, our city attorneys haven't, during my tenure, hasn't led us astray yet, and I've got confidence in what their advice is on these issues. I will tell you that the other piece too is, you know, and he's got to get through his presentation, because it's been stopped, and there's a lot of information that if we allow him to finish, might answer some of these questions. But specifically to heart, Councilman Gordon, to your question about, you know, the benefit, because the reason we're doing development is because we're trying to build in the city a more dynamic revenue base, right? It can't all be on residential. You've got to have some commercial and retail in order to offset that. And so as a part of offsetting that, right, the commercial taxes come up, and they do have some reprieve on the residential taxpayer, including the sales tax. So it was a great thing that we saw during our tax year, that actually, the sales tax that had been created and generated over and beyond for the last couple of years did have a positive impact on our tax rate. It will happen here as well. As more sales tax come in, then that impact will occur. So the 25% of the additional sales tax that will come in is better than the 0% of the sales taxes that we got today out there, is one way to look at this. And that additional 25% will reprieve and have a dramatic impact to the overall tax structure in the city. But again, the overall plan is to bring more commercial in. I mean, you know, we didn't even have a strong industrial base. We now have about a million square foot coming up out of the ground out there at Titan. And so, you know, we've got the co-op today, you've got the movie theater under construction, you've got the two restaurants out there under construction. Those things eventually will get on the tax roll. And here, as they mentioned, you've got approximately 700,000 square foot of retail space that, you know, we don't have today. So that's a lot of additional diversified income from a taxing structure standpoint. So when you look at that, okay, just understand that the 75% proportion of it is, because it's flowing through TERS, there's some exempt nature there, and also some of it. In fact, not only does that revenue stream that flows through the TERS that we get operating here, remember, there's a PID here too, which means, in a PID structure, it's actually the property tax owner who, the taxpayer who actually, which in this case, it would be the developer, who's agreeing to pay an additional tax on their property that will also be flowing in here. So he's got skin in the game from that standpoint. So think about it from that perspective as well, that today, we're not getting anything there. You'll be getting 25% of something versus 25% of nothing, and that does get applied, that portion would get applied to help reduce that. John, you need to get through your presentation so that you can highlight the components.
Yeah, I got another question, and that's fine, he needs to get through it. But while we're here, real quick, the sales tax piece, we've only got rights to the sales tax on 70 acres of the property, right? The western 75 or 73 acres?
That's correct. So it's, so yeah, I'm glad.
So where I'm going with this is, I, there's rumors that there's some agreement coming down with the ESD to split the tax, since they've got rights to either all or some portion of it, whatever it is. So we're getting 25%, we're getting all of the revenue on the 70 acres, and then we would get whatever percentage split with the ESD on the rest of it, and then that 75% would get pledged back in, and then the 25% we would get of that. So when we talk about the 60 million, is it taking into all those, all those revenues broken down?
It is taken into all of them broken down, but, so the city council, two years ago in 2017, entered into an agreement with the emergency services district that said, you know, when we have a bigger development deal, we'd like you to look at providing a level of incentives on a one-off basis.
Sharing scenario.
To, yeah. And so Legacy did meet with the ESD board, the ESD board did vote to approve a share of their collected amount. Their vote was to approve the 75% share to ensure that the development took off. And, you know, when you look at it overall, you know, we're talking about a billion and a half dollar private investment, then you've got to add, you know, the public investment component to this too. So, you know, holistically, you could bid a billion seven assets on the ground. Obviously, the $200 million assets will not be taxable, because they're going to be owned by the city, right? Or the city's arm, which is the local government corporation. But there is a huge tax evaluation that will come off of that, when you consider our current overall valuation today is, you know, just double that. So, you know, you cannot weigh it, you're going to make some money up, because you're going to get new sales tax, but at the same time, you're going to get a tremendous flow of new property taxes as well that you were not...
Yeah, but what I need to see is, like, when you, when we say the 60 million, is that, okay, the ESD, if the whole project is a billion, just to make the numbers easy, the ESD's going to get a quarter of a billion, we're going to get three quarters of that billion, and then we're going to pledge 75% of that back in, and then the 25 that's left. I just want to make sure it's all rolling down correctly, and it's not rolling up, hey, the whole project's getting 60 million, but then the ESD's getting some portion of that, or it splits all these different ways. That's where, that's the level of detail. I'm looking to make sure everything's rolling when we're throwing these numbers out, and it's not being misconstrued.
Okay.
Not saying, not saying it is being misconstrued, I just want to see the backing myself.
That's fair, and I think John has some of that that he can share with you here through his presentation. I know we keep stopping, but part of that is in there, because this is supposed to be just a conversation. But also too, which is, you know, I think it's important for, Jess, we have to make sure we include the city's economic impact analysis in the council packets as well when you get them out. They've got to get all the backup details so they can see all that. But that's a good point, Councilman Rose. John?
All right, I'm done, John.
And Councilmember, just to that point about the split of the sales tax, on the top line of the top box, it talks about the city's sales tax increment for the portion of the project that, that's applicable for the portion of the project that's within the city, not the ESD boundary. So 75% of the city's general and economic development sales tax, which sum total, those two are 1.5%. Then there's the 0.5% property tax relief, sales tax rate, so, which is not captured at all. For the portion that's within the ESD, 2%, the proposal to the ESD is to split it, 75% to the city, 25% to the ESD. So then you get back to that percent and a half again, and then it's 75% of that percent and a half. So in both instances, whether, whether the sales taxes are being generated in the ESD district, or within the city's area where the city's sales tax is applicable, the project has 1.125 either way, and the city participates to the 75% level in both instances as well.
So you let me do another question. So we give the EDC a half a percent?
Correct.
So have we done an agreement or a setup to take their half percent of the 70 acres we already own?
That's a good question. Yes, we have. They've agreed, the EDC board voted...
Dancing on his head, so it sounds like it's been looked at. Okay.
Yeah, the board's already acted, I believe, right there? Yeah, I believe the board has acted already to approve it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to overview the GAI revenue study that we referred to previously. So this is the independent third party hired by the city, and the study will be a part of the bond documents for the Series 2019 financing.
Jess, you need to drop that whole document in the council bucket. I know it's like, what, 200 pages or something like that, but they need to see it.
The revenue study itself is about a 60-page document. GAI is headquartered, has a national practice headquartered out of Orlando. DA Davidson, the underwriter for the city, has worked with them before, including most of the other national underwriters as well. They have an excellent reputation out in the market. Their study overview, the outline of their study is fairly comprehensive. You'll see that when you see the full report. It's got an executive summary at the front end, a project overview. They go into an analysis of economic conditions, both generally and specific to the project. They talk about the overall industry, entertainment, restaurant, all the components that are a part of this project. They talk about overall what that industry is looking like, what's going on in the market overall, to give the reader a sense for what the important trends are within that industry. Then they drill down into the local context, local and regional context, and talk about specific market conditions, competitive factors, things of that nature that will impact this project. And then they get to ultimately their own opinion of the pledged revenues and the other potential revenue streams for the project. From a sales assumption standpoint, we've clipped in some of the major assumptions that you'll read within that report. I'll highlight just a few. They come up with their own growth rate, their own amount of sales per building square foot for things such as retail and entertainment, $345 per building square foot was their concluded overall average, and for food and beverage and restaurants, a higher number at $600 per building square foot. All those assumptions are clearly, a full read of the report's important to understand all of the assumptions that underlie their ultimate opinions and conclusions of the report, but these are a number of the salient points within that report.
The second bullet back there, adjusted down?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, not up, down.
Yeah, so the second bullet reflects, within any, any project of the size that we're dealing with, there will be portions of what are reported as gross sales for retailers that are not subject to tax. For example, tax-exempt purchases of goods, or perhaps tax-exempt services, or other things like that. So this is a measure of conservatism, sure, the consultant is applying to the projections.
I just want to make sure we're being conservative, not the other way around.
Yes, yes, correct, correct. On the property tax side, again, key assumptions with respect to the assessed values for all of the components of the project. They have estimated average building per square foot assessed values between $185 and $275 per foot for the retail, entertainment, restaurant components. I'll cite a number of $225 per building square foot for office, $130,000 per unit for multifamily, and $60,000 per room on the hotels. As far as the hotel revenue generation, they looked at detail in the local and regional market with respect to average daily rates, concluded to an overall $85 per available room night. That's factoring in vacancy as well on those room nights, so that's the rev par for the revenues and growth rate projections there. And then from the PID assessment standpoint, they used what our initial projection is going to be with respect to where the PID will be set, which of course is subject to city approval and developer approval of what that rate will be, but a dollar per square foot on the commercial uses and $540 per residential unit on the apartments. Those are the assumptions that underlie a number of tables that you'll see within the report, at the tail end of the report, that sum total all of their conclusions. This table is a nice overall summary of the revenue projection expected from the city TERS property tax, the city sales tax collection, again, whether that's technically city sales tax, or if we're in the ESD area, the number captured to the project is the same, city hotel occupancy tax, and PID assessments. So those sum total the total revenues pledged per year and grand total with respect to the project, and there are more tables within the report, some of them difficult to project up on here, but you'll have all the details when you receive that full study. So happy to answer any questions with respect to anything that I've covered, whether the 2019 financing, the revenues, the 2020 projection, or anything related to those items.
So on the 2019 bond, the 9%, how long are we going to carry that 9%?
So it's really expected just until we get the 2020 bond to refinance it.
So it'll only be like six months or so?
Right. We have more, we have more runway than that on the bond. There's capitalized interest of about two years in a debt service reserve fund that's called a surplus fund for another year beyond that. But that, the anticipation that it's much quicker than that.
Our goal would be sometime next spring, June, May-June timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
And we'll have that, Jessica, you'll have that report in our Dropbox by the, for the part next week. It'll be part of the council package.
Yeah, we should just drop it. So that you have it with all your documents that John spoke about, so that you'll be able to see that with the bond documents, the study as well, so you'll have all that together as part of your consideration for the 21st meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Good morning, Mayor, Councilmember. My name is Karen Kennard, and I'm a shareholder with the Greenberg Charak Law Firm. We have been retained to be the city's bond counsel on this deal, so this is our first opportunity to meet you and to come and talk about the interlocal agreement related to this deal. Just a brief overview of our law firm. Greenberg Charak is an international law firm. We have about 39 offices in the United States, Europe, Asia, Latin America, and the Middle East. We have about 2,000 lawyers in that law firm, and of those 39 offices, we have three offices here in Texas, Houston, Dallas, and Austin. I'm in the Austin office of the firm. I'm joined here today by my colleague Frank Jones, who is in our Houston office. A little bit about my background, I've been with the law firm a little over three and a half years. I joined the law firm after serving five and a half years as the city attorney for the city of Austin. I was with the city for about 11 years, five and a half years as the deputy city attorney, and five and a half years as the city attorney. Previous to going to work for the city of Austin, I was the general counsel for the Texas Municipal League. I served 15 years at the league in various capacities. My last four years at the league, I was the general counsel there. So my practice at the law firm focuses on representing governments like the city and other types of governmental entities, as well as some private businesses and individuals on municipal law issues. I'm going to let Frank introduce himself, and then we'll get into the presentation.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for allowing us to be here today. This is my first trip to Hutto, and we're very excited to be representing you on this project. As Karen said, I am based in the Houston office. I was part of the group that opened the Greenberg Houston office 14 years ago. I currently serve as the co-chair of our National Public Finance and Infrastructure Group. My practice primarily involves public finance, general bond obligations, revenue bond issuances. The other part of my practice is public-private partnerships, doing developments such as this, and I'm the head of our sports facilities and entertainment group. So that is a brief review of my background.
I think maybe we should start with trying to... I think maybe we should start with trying to answer Councilmember Snyder's question before we maybe get into this. As you know, under the current rollback rate calculation for maintenance and operation, under that current calculation, any revenues that are paid into a tax increment refund zone or TERS are deducted from that calculation because those revenues are dedicated to a specific purpose. They're not monies that can be used for general purposes in your calculation. So under current law, in the calculation, they're rolled out and deducted. So they don't count towards your rollback rate. And as you know, starting January 1st, there's a new term. It's not called the rollback rate anymore. It's going to be called the new voter approval rate. And that same calculation of deducting those revenues is going to carry forward even in that new calculation. So with that, I think what we were being asked to talk about today is the structure of the interlocal agreement that the city is going to enter with the Cottonwood Development Corporation, which is the local government corporation. As you know, an interlocal agreement is basically a contract. So what we have been working on is that contract between the city and the local government corporation. Under state law, the local government corporation is a governmental entity, just like the city. And so they're able to contract with you in this particular deal. We have established the interlocal agreement similar to the way the deal was set up in the co-op deal from last year. So basically, under the provisions of that interlocal agreement, which will be on the council agenda next week, November 21st, the city's going to agree to do certain, undertake and do certain obligations as well as the corporation. And I'm going to talk about the things that the city is going to do pursuant to that agreement. First of all, there's going to be a general obligation that the city will have where they will authorize the corporation to act on behalf of the city. The first thing is that they're going to authorize the corporation to enter into a loan agreement with the Arizona Industrial Development Authority. And under the provisions of that loan, there will be certain obligations that the corporation will have to fulfill. So that's the first kind of big bucket of obligations that the city's going to have in the interlocal agreement. The second, I guess, big bucket of obligations that the city's going to have under the interlocal agreement is related to the pledged revenues. And before you can get to the pledged revenues, the interlocal agreement will set out certain things that the city has to do. And you have already begun the process of doing some of those things. So first, the city, under the interlocal agreement, is agreeing that they're going to create a tax increment refinance zone. You started that process of doing that. And that, when that particular process is finished of creating that zone, the board being approved, the city's then going to agree and work with the board to levy the abhorrent tax that will be implemented within that zone. Once that zone is created and revenues start flowing pursuant to the interlocal agreement, the city is agreeing to pay those revenues to the local government corporation. So once all of the steps have been taken to create the TERS, under the interlocal agreement, the city says that the revenue that's generated within that zone will be paid to the local government corporation. The second pledged revenue and the second thing in that bucket related to the city's obligations is that the city is agreeing to create a public improvement district. That process has already begun of creating that district. And once that district is created, once all of the steps are gone through to create that public improvement district, there are certain assessments that you know that the district can make based upon their service and assessment plan. And the city and the developer will work to determine what the level of those assessments are. And then, under the interlocal agreement, the city is agreeing that those assessments that are collected will also be paid to the local government corporation. So that's the second bucket of pledged revenues from the project. You have the revenues that will be generated in the TERS zone, the revenues that are generated from the public improvement district assessments. And then you're going to have some other revenues that the city will also pledge. The third type of revenue that the city's agreeing to pledge under the interlocal agreement is your sales tax. And within that particular project area, there are two different types of sales taxes that the city is going to collect in that area. As you know, you have a 1% sales tax that will be imposed in that area. And so the city is agreeing that they're going to collect that 1% sales tax and pay a certain portion of that as pledged revenue to the local government corporation. You also have an economic development sales tax that will be also collected within that project area. And as part of the interlocal, the city is going to agree to pay a portion of that as pledged revenue to the local government corporation. You also heard a little bit about, there's an agreement, I understand that's being worked on related to the emergency services district and its portion that will also be included or is anticipated to be included as part of the pledged revenue. And then you also have a hotel occupancy tax that the city will impose within that area. Your current, as you know, your current hotel occupancy tax is 7%. And the city is going to agree through the interlocal agreement to pay the corporation the portion of that hotel occupancy tax that is collected within that project area. And so all of those particular revenues are referred to as the pledged revenues or will be referred to as the pledged revenues in the interlocal agreement that the city is agreeing to pay to the local government corporation under provisions of the ILA. One of the things I want to make clear is that, as with other, some of the other speakers have made, this obligation that the city is entering to with the interlocal agreement is not pledging the city's full faith and credit. The only thing that will, that the city is pledging is that they're going to collect these revenues. They're going to pay them to the interlocal corporation. And then that the interlocal corporation will have certain obligations and duties under the agreement. The city will not be on the hook for any repayment or any revenues that don't materialize. They're not a debt or an obligation of the city and its general obligations. And so the interlocal agreement will not give rise to any kind of charge against the city's general full faith and credit or taxing power of the city. On the opposite end of the interlocal agreement is the local government corporation. That's the Cottonwood Local Government Corporation. And their obligations under this agreement will be to act on behalf of the city, to enter into the loan agreement with the Arizona Industrial Development Authority. And there are certain obligations that they have relations to entering into that loan. Specifically, once they enter into that loan, the interlocal agreement will set out what they will be required to do, what the local government corporation will be required to do with the proceeds from that loan. First of all, the interlocal agreement will say that the local government corporation will be required to finance the acquisition of property that either the city owns or that is to be acquired, that will be used in the project area. So that will be clearly set out in the interlocal agreement. They will also be required to use the proceeds of that loan for the payment of certain pre-development costs that are related to the project. And as you've heard, the project will be a mix of different types of uses, like commercial, retail, residential, athletic, recreational, entertainment, convention center hotels. And there's an aquatic use that will be in that project area. So they will be required to use the proceeds for that purpose as well. They'll also be required to use the proceeds for capitalized interest on the bonds. And they'll be required to deposit some of the proceeds to a surplus fund. Finally, as related to the proceeds from the loan, the local government corporation will also be required to pay the cost of issuance of the bonds. The corporation, under the interlocal agreement, will agree that it will use all of these pledged revenues that it receives from the city to pay the debt service costs on the bonds that have been issued for this project. So just kind of an overview, the city's making a promise to collect the funds, transfer the funds to the local government corporation. The local government corporation is making a promise to go make the loan from the Arizona Industrial Development Authority, use those proceeds to purchase land and other type, and pay other types of costs related to the project, and then enter into all of the security agreements related to secure the bonds related to this particular project.
Thank you, Karen. To further elaborate on the bond transaction, I think Karen did a tremendous job describing the loan agreement. The other primary document that will come before you on Thursday is the trust agreement, which is between the bond issuer and the bond trustee. That document is basically the governing document of this transaction. It's kind of the, describes all the mechanics of the transaction. It shows how the pledged revenues come into a flow of funds to pay back the note that the corporation is entering to. And it has all the basic descriptions on how the bonds can be redeemed, what the security of the bonds is. It'll describe a deed of trust that is being entered into to allow the land to be part of the security for the bond transaction and things like that. One other thing I want to reiterate that John talked about and Karen did as well is the nonrecourse nature of these bonds. One of the other documents you'll receive on Thursday will be a preliminary limited offering memorandum. We have in all caps, bold letters, probably 10 times in that document stating that main thing, that the security for this deal is primary. The land and pledged revenues don't exist yet. There is no obligation for the city, the corporation, the state of Texas, or any of its entities to pay back these bonds. So that will be very clear in the documentation you'll see. One of the other documents that you will see also on Thursday is a bond purchase agreement. This is basically the agreement where the underwriters make a deal with the corporation to purchase the bonds and offering them in a limited offering to the public. So that will be, they'll offer these bonds what we call, what this SEC calls qualified institutional buyers. They're very sophisticated buyers, very similar to the people that purchase your bonds on the co-op deal. So they have a clear understanding of what this transaction is about. They're making a bet on the city of Hutto and the developer. They understand the limited nature of the revenues as they exist today. And they understand the risk is all on their side in purchasing these bonds and participating in this project. The last document you will see on Thursday is a continuing disclosure agreement. And the developer and the local government corporation are entering in that agreement to basically give some assurance to the investors that we will keep them apprised on how the project is going. Because it is a limited offering, you are not obligated to do this because you are only dealing with these qualified institutional buyers. But to give some comfort to the marketplace and to incentivize people to buy the bonds, the corporation and the developer are agreeing to give them certain information every year to let them know how the project is going. And also to alert them to if there are any kind of material defaults or notices that they should have, that something is going wrong with the project. For instance, a payment default or something happening on the development, some kind of disaster. You know, you let the market know that those things are happening. And outside of that, the rest of the documents will be put together between Thursday and actual closing date in mid-December. Most of those are things you've seen before. There'll be title policies that are required, the surveys required as part of the real estate deal. A lot of certificates that are come back before you for the corporation to sign, dealing with the actual closing of the bonds and things like that. But I think on Thursday, you will get the primary meat and potatoes, so to speak, of what this bond deal is for your approval.
And those will all be part of our packet on Monday, wouldn't it?
Yep, so that's all part of your packet. It's the 21st is when you're actually considering the documents, but you'll have them to review.
And I think, just for clarification.
We need to make sure we, the stuff that we have, they need to get there in the first day.
And I think just a clarification for people. Part of the reason why the packet was not ready yesterday is Lacy had an emergency situation come up on Thursday and is out. So they've been scrambling, trying to get this stuff all together. They got the agenda out, the packet, they're working on that, and it'll be out to council on Monday. So there was an emergency, well, a couple of emergency situations that kind of happened this last week with you.
Yeah, Lacy was in the hospital, and then I found myself down in Houston in the hospital helping my brother.
So the council should have the packet on Monday then. It's kind of some, in extenuating circumstances, they're normally going to occur.
Trying to learn how to do this in two days.
So that's why you haven't seen the packet. I mean, you've seen the agenda, but you have not seen the packet yet.
But why wouldn't we have seen the packet for this? I mean, does it account for this meeting? I mean, she, Ms. Kennard, just literally read the agreement, yet I don't see it in my packet.
I will say that the agreement's not done. I'm in charge of the agreement, and it's not completed. That's my outline of the agreement that I'm working on, Councilmember. It's not completed.
But even an outline would be great. While you were reviewing that, I mean, that's a lot of information for someone like me who hasn't done this before to try to process as you're reading it to me, understand all of those different intricacies. And then I'm going to get that agreement, the 200 pages, the 300 pages. I'm going to get those on Monday, and I'm going to have Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday to read, what, 600, 700 pages, to then vote on a Thursday. So it's a lot of stuff to run through in 72 hours when, I know when I speak, for a lot of us, we all got to work, then find time to read all of those, process all of them, and then show up on a Thursday and figure out what we understand and where we want to go with those. And so even an outline, even if it's not fully written, is still better than me trying to listen to you, digest it, and then really not be able to ask any questions since I am still processing all of that stuff you just read to me. Since there's a lot of the city this, the agreement here, this pledge here, this there. It's just, it's really confusing trying to draw that web and understand where's what in all of that.
Yes, sir.
So we'll make sure we get you all the documents. I mean, this is, as you are very aware, since selecting this developer and trying to meet the timeframe for a perfect game, it has been a hump. And all of the players on the team has been working throughout the night and day to get us to this point. We will be sharing information to you as we get it. Some of this information, you know, I haven't gotten yet myself. I will be reviewing, and a lot of us sometime are reviewing these documents at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning. There's emails going backwards and forth between us. So it has been an effort to try to make this project work at the request of the council. You all, as a body, said to us, "Go get this done." And we have been working to that endeavor to get it done. But it has been liquid because of the timeframe and the nature of getting all these things executed. But we're working to do that. So with that, I think we now, just any questions, any other questions that council? that council have about the overall structure? Um, Jess, I know I've asked for you to put many of these documents that we do have on the website, and I know some of them was dropped on the website as early as a month ago, but I want to make sure everything is out as, as quickly as we can possibly get it. Some of these documents are still being drafted, uh, as we speak. Uh, so it's a little liquid, but, uh, we're, we're confident we can still make the structure and make the deal work as the council body has, has requested out of, out of us to do. So, um, and it will be done in a way that you, you as a body have approved these deals before. So while Karen discussed this structure today, uh, for some of you who was on the council, uh, um, when we did the co-op deal, uh, this is the same structure, uh, as she mentioned. Uh, for some of you who were involved with the pit deal we did with Meritage Homes, it's the same structure. Uh, the Mustang Creek, uh, pit that was approved a couple of months ago, it's the same structure. So, uh, it's, it's the same documents, same structure. We tried to keep it that way intentionally to, so that you can, you know, so there's, you know, so you can see that the same kinds of documents, the same kinds of language. Uh, we'll make sure as these documents are drafted, because that we, we get them to you as soon as we can.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't want to be holding them on.
No problem.
Because I don't want you guys to feel that we're trying not to hide anything from you. We just haven't gotten some of these documents drafted yet.
Yeah, as early as this morning, still working on them.
So we've been working all night on some of this stuff.
So, and this presentation will be on the website, one that we've done today.
Yes.
We'll get that on the website next week, okay. Any other questions from the council member, question?
Will it be posted in the projects section?
In the project section, yes, sir.
Okay, questions?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a couple. Okay, so you, you all are attorneys that are representing the city?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I've got a couple of questions. One, one is a, I don't know how to address this without us going into a walking quarant. When the LGC is meeting, I don't think a council member can go and ask the LGC questions because then you have three people up on the board, and that would make a fourth. But do you all see a problem legally with a, since you have municipal experience, with a council meeting recessing, then having an LGC meeting in the middle of it, and then LGC meeting getting, getting over, and then the council meeting coming back, with the intent being that a council member can then ask the LGC questions?
That is no problem. That is, that is frequently how it happens.
That's frequently how it happens.
Yes, sir. When you have local governmental entities like a city that, that have given legal authorities to create an entity, which the, the LGC is a separate governmental entity. When the council members are serving on that board, they are not serving as council members. They're serving in their capacity as members of that board. So frequently, my experience is cities create an LGC, they appoint members of the council to serve, they'll have a council meeting, they'll recess their council meeting, they'll look, called to order the meeting of the local government corporation, they'll bring up the agenda, conduct the business of that local government corporation, then adjourn that local government corporation, and go back into the business of the council meeting. So that's not unusual at all.
Okay, so as a comment, I'd like to see that, just, um, okay, and then it, it, going along with that, um, there's been some concern by some folks that if the LGC is represented by, if the board is made up of three council members, when they vote on an item, and then that item then comes in front of the city council, is it best practice to?
I was looking at your city attorney.
Oh, no. He's, he's- The reason, the reason I ask you is-
Okay.
You, you guys are speaking on LGCs, and so I'm like, if we're going to pay to do this, I'm going to get your opinion because I know I could ask him later and get his and put it together, but, so is it, and I'm not looking for what legally, what we could do, I'm looking more for what maybe we should do. Is it a best practice from a conflict of interest to have the same three people that's on the council on an LGC, or is it better to have maybe one council member on LGC so that then if something big comes up, they can recuse themselves from something, uh, when it comes in front of council? Am I, am I saying that right? I, I guess the fear is, is your LGC is made up of your council, and so really there's not a, there's not a second body that kind of has the checks and balances, because obviously if the LGC votes 3-0 to do something, those three members, I would assume, when they go back to the council as a separate entity, they're then going to vote the exact same way. It almost feels like that if your EDC was made up all of council members, you wouldn't have the checks and balances. So is it better to have the way we have it structured, or is it better to have?
Okay, and so I'm going to answer this like a lawyer. I think state law has allowed for that to happen. So looking at the wording of state law, state law allows a council to create the entities and allows the council to appoint council people to serve on those entities. So from using the words conflict, I think the legislators have decided that by allowing members of the governing body, that maybe there's not a conflict. I mean-
I mean, there could be conflict.
Because state law allows people to serve in both positions.
Sure, or they, or they couldn't, I mean, is it safe to say they may expect those council members to then recuse themselves when that vote comes up, knowing that?
No. I think state law provides for certain conflicts of interest statutes that will apply in all those circumstances. So the mere fact that a council member serves both on the council and say a local government corporation is not an inherent conflict.
Okay.
When there's a conflict, you then go to those separate conflict of interest statutes to determine whether or not those members serving in whatever capacity will have a conflict.
Thank you, I know that'll, that'll help a lot of people out.
Thank you.
Council member, we do not believe there's a conflict the way it's set up.
Yeah.
We think it is proper. All the meetings of the local government corporation are posted, just as your meetings are. They're open, you can attend them if you wish and ask questions on that, but we do not think there's a conflict with three council members serving as the board.
Thank you. I, I, not saying there is or isn't, I just know there's, people ask questions, and then my job is to get answers for them, and I'm not one to go behind the scenes and ask the questions. I ask them in public so people watching this can say, hey, that guy asked a question, it's what I've been thinking, and now everybody has the answer. One, one last question, and, and this is one that I already know our legal opinion of. So subchapter D of the transportation code talks about how you form a LGC. What I would like to see is, I'd like to see the, uh, the bylaws and the articles of incorporation come before this council so we can vote on them, just because my re, not an attorney, but my reading of subchapter D is in order for the corporation to be formed properly, we would have to vote on those, and since we haven't seen the, those items before we get into all this, I'd really like to see this council, by what I, my reading of law is, to adopt these. I know you said before that we've already given the, the authority away and, and we're good to go, but I'd like to at least have the council on record, vote for those items so that if there's any questions about the legality of the corporation, following the law. And so that's just more of a statement, not much of a question.
We can supply those. They, they have been copied to the council, we can send it again and have you confirm or ratify or however you want to do that.
It, it's not me, it just says in the state, in the, in the transportation code, it says to be effective, which I'm assuming we need it to be effective. The articles of incorporation and the bylaws of a local government corporation must be approved by ordinance, resolution, or order adopted by the governing body of each local government that the corporation is created to, aid, and act on behalf of. And so we haven't done that yet.
Thank you.
And I've been trying for a couple of months to get us to do that because I'm trying to, I'm a literal person, so I'm trying to follow the law here, and so I see that and I go, eventually, I'm not looking for any gotchas, I'm just looking for us to take the standard, I assume they're the exact same from River Creek. It's a formality, I just want to see the formalities done properly and brought forward and voted on, so.
Prepare a ratification resolution for the next meeting.
Speak into the mic.
Uh, Mayor Council, I think, uh, the city attorney should be to prepare a ratification resolution for the next council meeting. I mean, it's not a problem.
Okay. Yeah, thanks. Any other questions for developer, financing, LGC?
Yeah, I just had one, and it was more of a clarification, I think, for people who are probably watching this. So we've talked a lot about the, the pledged revenues from the city, but we haven't mentioned the pledged revenues from the actual project and, and the, the project in there. It almost makes it sound like the city's paying for everything, right? So, which-
It's a good question. It's a good question. John, you might want to come back up, but all of the revenues in itself is being generated from the project. So, you know, I know we, we've talked about pledged revenues, but, um, all revenues under that umbrella that we've been discussing, I'm glad you pointed that out, they're not revenues that's coming from the current city coffers. Those are revenues that are being generated from the project itself.
Right. So, so we're pledging some to help pay for that, but the, but I just wanted to make sure the citizens knew that, uh, you know, a big percentage of this is being paid by the project itself, and they're paying for the bonds, it's not just the city covering.
I thought you were asking how much skin the developer was putting in.
Yeah, and then do we know that percentage, kind of?
So, just, just so you know, um, not some, but all of the revenues that we're discussing under pledge, and I see Karen shaking her head, yes, all of those revenues are being generated from the project itself. None of them are coming from the city's coffers currently.
Or in the future.
Or, go ahead.
Or in the future.
Or in the future, right. Or in the future. So just, just so that everybody know that, because that, I'm glad you mentioned that because people need to understand that. They're all being generated from the, the project itself. Skin in the game from the developer is he's taking the vertical risks in the transaction, he's also taking, uh, the pre-development risks, um, he's going to be starting construction and taking construction early on. Dan, you might want to step up to the mic to answer that question about your skin in the game and what you're doing. This is a billion and a half project, Dan's got to go, he's got to step up and come up with the other 600 million in equity that's required to make it all work. Uh, so, uh, you know, they, they've got to go raise the money and come up with the private financing to make the whole thing go.
Yes, so, uh, yeah, the, that is correct. Uh, I do want to reiterate, that's a, a great question, I'm glad you brought that up, and uh, it, it's been addressed now, but 100% of the revenues pledged do come from the project. Um, we, we hope, uh, and Tony's here, he could speak to it as well, but we hope to, uh, start the dirt work process, uh, certainly within the next 30 days or less. Uh, the contractors, uh, that, well, they're, they're out doing borings right now, and we're just trying to figure out how much, um, how deep we have to go, uh, and cut to bring instructional fill, that, that kind of detail is being discussed right now. Grading plans are, uh, near complete, and, uh, so I hope you'll, you'll see dirt moving within the next 30 days and a groundbreaking set for, for very soon.
I have one last question.
A lot of that risk is going to be, I mean, a lot of that is going to be, he's going to be going at risk for that because, um, we, he's going to be starting at work with the hope, key word, hope and anticipation, that the zoning board and the city council will eventually approve all of the zoning things, but in terms of skin in the game, um, Dan was asked to do that as a part of stepping into a project after we had, um, you know, expired the relationship with the previous developer. He, he's had to kind of come in at the last minute and, and put his equity at risk, uh, to make it all work, so.
Yeah, the, uh, the site work number, uh, with parking lots, curb and gutter, you saw it earlier, is about $55 million, so that's really the initial commitment. Uh, it's pretty significant.
All right, thanks for clarifying that, I appreciate it.
Sure. I've got one last question for John. Um, can you go to the slide with the projected revenue, pledged revenues? And I'm going to put John on the spot to see how well he can do some math in his head and follow me. Uh, that one. Yes, okay, so I just want to make sure I'm reading this right when I'm going to go home and, and back calculate all this stuff. And the one I'm most looking at is the sales tax collections. So in 2021, you're going to say the pledged amount that the city's going to give back to the LGC is 623,000, right?
Correct. 600, th, these are GAI's projections.
Yeah, clear, yeah, not yours. I just want to make sure I'm reading it right because I'm sure you guys kind of did the same thing, right? So the calculations in theory-
These are revenues to the project for, for the financing piece, it does not include the piece that the city keeps.
Correct. So my question is, so if I wanted to know what the total revenue is, I would divide that by 0.75, right, to backwards up to get to the 100% of what the city's going to collect. Correct, does that make sense?
The effective rate is 1.125%, because it's 75% of the city's 1% and the city's 0.5% EDC rate. So the effective rate to divide the revenue by is 1.125%.
But I would have to go, so that number is the 1.125 that's paid in, right? Which means if I back that out correctly, that's saying we're going to generate 74 million in revenue that first, that year then to pay, because you would need 74 million in revenue to get down to the 1.125, and then 75% of that would be that. So you'd need 74 million in sales tax revenue or in general revenue of sales tax to then get down to that number.
The-
For their calculation, I'm not saying for your calculation, I'm saying for their calculation. That's how the math would work, correct?
The 75% has already been factored into the 1.125%.
Mm-hmm.
So it's 75% of 1.5%. And so what is reflected in the, in the third column there that says city sales tax collections, that's an effective rate, that's taking the taxable sale projections times 1.125%.
Okay, so then it'd be 50 million in theory. If I'm doing, I think if I'm doing the math correct, I've got Excel on, so I'm pretty sure I'm doing it right.
Yeah, yeah.
So then, and I guess this is more a question for Dan then, um, so is, is anything going to open prior to Perfect Game in 2021? Are you expecting anything to open prior to the ball fields and the PG stuff in 2021?
Our hope is that we will open several restaurants, hotels simultaneous with, but not prior to.
Because then my only other question is, so you're, that theory would then say you're going to do 50 million in sales tax revenue in six months? Because you will have lost half a year, because we're only, we're only running to October, right? Or is this looking at a calendar fiscal year, or is this looking at the government fiscal year?
This is a calendar year without lagging, and I think those issues are addressed in the details of the report.
Which is, okay, thank you, because that's what I want to see, because I'm like, you're going to do this in six months.
Yeah.
I wasn't really going to buy it, but if it's a fiscal, if it's a calendar year, it makes a little bit more sense because then you're doing it over eight months, which I can buy a little bit more, but even still.
Yeah, and to, to clarify, the, the projections are GAI's, they're based on that expectation of having users, uh, open along with, but not before Perfect Game. Um, there's lagging that needs to be considered, and because bond rep, bondholders are taking the risk with respect to this, it's their risk that revenues actually come in maybe three or six months or some, some period of later.
No, I mean, I just want to make, I just want to make sure I understand when I see these reports, how I can back calculate that and, and spot check those numbers and make sure they pass.
I would make one other, one other point with respect to the 2019 bonds too, because they're an early-stage bond, the collateral is twofold, these pledged revenues, but also the land itself. So the 2020 bond issue will be sized based on the projected revenues. This 2019 bond issue is not really based on the size of the revenues, it's based on collateral and the fact that this large project is coming with a large amount of revenues, but there's, yeah, there's a little, there's a subtle difference there because of the early stage nature of Series 2019 financing.
And council member, we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Dan, you might want to mention you, you, you're prepared this month, we were talking about even doing announcements of some of the current tenants.
Yeah, we, we certainly want signed leases, not just letters of intent to announce, but we, we hope to be able to be doing that in short order. I was going to mention to you also, um, for any of the council members that are interested in, um, we provide a lot of information to GAI for them to complete these, uh, studies, including what we call a merchandising plan, the types of tenants that we anticipate putting in the project, and we've worked with GAI on several of the deals that we've done, so they know us. But we'd be happy to walk through that merchandising plan, it's just a drill down on the site plan I showed you earlier, and the types of retailers that we anticipate- I showed you earlier, and the types of retailers that we anticipate being in the various spaces, if you're interested in that kind of detail. That's how they come up with these projections, based on our, our assumptions on who the tenants will be.
Who the tenants are, who the tenants are, plus what they typically, those particular tenants typically pay.
And generate.
And generate.
Correct.
Historicals, historicals.
And sorry, John, I see in the first line of the notes, it says it's a calendar year, not a government fiscal, so I answered that question.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you very much, great, great questions.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Request for a quick five-minute break?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, we're returning from break at 6:30 for 10:31. And we will go into 6A, consideration possible action approving resolution to enter into a 381 agreement with Williamson County regarding the Sports Health and Entertainment District.
Mayor and your council, so this item 6A, 6B, and 7A, these are all related to the conversation that we had during the work session. So the 381 agreement, these three, we're looking to have them tabled for action at this meeting to be able to bring you the agreements and the documents for your consideration at the meeting on November 21st. This one in particular is to essentially authorize the city manager to go to Williamson County and to request their participation into the Turs District.
Yeah, but we don't have an agreement with them. We're just asking them if there's official, it's official. This should be an official request from the council.
Yes.
To them, to ask them if they're willing to participate.
Correct.
This should, so.
So it's not committing to anything.
Yeah, I've been out a little bit the last couple of days, but this, this, this should be just a resolution from this elected body to that elected body saying, look, we like you guys to participate from a 381 agreement perspective. I know a year ago, whenever this project first started, I had went and talked to them, it's been a long time, and then I know that, I believe, Mayor, you and council president, I know, or you and Tom Hines met with county commissioner too about their potential participation.
Yeah.
But this needs to happen from the council to the commission.
Officially go pursue it with the details.
Yeah, it should be an official request from the city.
It's not, it's not saying we approve it.
No, it's not. It's not. Resolution is just to say that we're going to go.
And so if they do agree to come in with it, then they'll come back with a resolution once they approve, and we'll bring back that resolution to the council to approve. So it's not.
That's correct.
All it's doing is authorizing, or basically kind of saying, yeah, we as a council want to go to the county and see will they participate.
Yeah, which means it's got to be reworded a little bit, because that, the, again, I've been out of pocket the last couple of days, but this should be official request to ask the county commission to participate, that's the way.
And that's how the resolution is worded as well, is that you're just going to then request that, and their participation would be through a 381 agreement that we still would need to work through.
And then that, that would then come back to.
Correct. So the resolution is just.
It's not committing us to anything with it, it's all, all just saying, let's go off and start looking at it.
So what this would do would just give you basically greater authority that to, for you to be able to go and say, hey, my whole council wants me, or at least a portion of my council wants me to go and, and to negotiate with you.
Yeah.
Kind of what you're asking for, it's just some more.
That's, that's effectively, that's it, but typically what happens in this, like when we went, when we did the co-op, is actually council members went to the county commission meeting, I was just there to provide some detail, but the mayor presented the requests. I think Councilwoman Turner at the time was there, as well as Councilwoman Graham and some other council members, but what should happen here is that the council, this is just a formal expression to request them, then that needs to go to the commission, the council, meaning the elected members of this body should be at that commission meeting, should make that official request, and me and the staff would be there for detail, but, you know, answer details, but that's, that's the way we've done it in the past, that's the way it was done last year when we did the, the co-op agreement as well.
Okay, so in, in saying all this, as some people know, I meet frequently with the county for various things, just to keep relationships good and strong. The way this resolution is written is that we're authorizing the city manager to go and work with the county. And I can say that we need to probably change this to be, city council needs to go meet with the county. At this point in time, the county only wants to meet with city council members.
And the mayor, and the mayor being the representative voice.
But they didn't.
Yeah, I think that does, I agree with him, I think that needs to be, this, I didn't see this because I've been out the last couple of days, but this caption needs to be changed, it should be the city council doing that, not, not me. I think it's important anytime you're making those requests, that it's elected body to elected body, and that's the way it was done last time as well.
Okay, so, now with that, in talking to the county, the county has some concerns, and I think it's best we start working on the concerns of the county before we just walk up and do a, hey, if you don't agree to this, this kills our deal, okay? So in talking to the county, there's been some conduct by our city that has a couple of their commission members not wanting to, I guess they're just upset with the way the city's kind of gone about some things. We also have an issue, the county right now is focused big time on the road plan. And so if we're looking for a very fast time, I mean, we can't go in and expect something to be passed in two weeks, so we're going to have to put some time into this, because they're focused on a road plan and implementing that sort of thing. So I know Mayor, Mayor Protem, you all met with the county, I think I met with Judge Gavel that morning, so we've had some meetings, but I think the sooner we put out an olive branch, the better, I wouldn't put, I wouldn't put this off. So I just say those, those things there that.
I think it's fair to say that we would not need their approval until February. So February is when we would need it, February even closer to March, I would say. So this is intended to give that runway for the elected members to sit down and have a conversation.
Sounds good. So what, I think so, once, if this is passed, and once it's passed by council, then what I will do is reach out to Judge Gavel as mayor to county, county judge, and set up a time that we can have a joint, or whatever steps we need to take to, for the council to come meet with the county and go through that process.
So what's our action here, to go back and reword the resolution?
I think, I think.
Yeah, that's why, that's why, that's why I wanted it tabled, because it's not worded right, right? I've just been out of, I haven't been in office the last couple of days, because it would have been dealing with, but.
Or we can press it to the 21st and be reworded.
Yeah, I'm not into that.
So do we have a motion?
So I make a motion to table item 6A until it's, until it's corrected, whatever meeting that becomes.
I think it's already on the meeting for the 21st.
Okay.
Second? Hold on, I can't hear.
Okay, so motion, the motion is to table 6A to the 11/21 meeting. You've got a motion by Councilmember Snyder, do I, you spoke, so I guess.
That's fine. I mean, it's already on there, right? I mean, I don't remember the agenda word for word, but I'm pretty sure it's already on there.
Do we need to amend that to say we, in addition to tabling it, but to also reword it?
Yeah, it needs to be reworded. If you table it, the one we bring back to you is going to be reworded.
Call for vote.
Mayor Dougall?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hines?
Aye.
Councilman Scott Rose?
Aye.
Councilmember Mike Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Peter Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Patty Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Tanner Rose?
Aye.
Motion passed, settled. Next item is 6B, consideration possible action authorizing approving resolution for interlocal agreement with the Cottonwood Development Corporation and containing other matters related there too.
Hey, Mayor and Council, so this item is the part of that presentation that was provided to you, going over the structure, and so we've gone through that as part of the work session. If you have any additional questions on this, we can cover it at that ti, at this time. However, just to, as we're still working through those documents, to get those to you, so that you can review, we'd like to still table this until the November 21st meeting as well.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, let me.
So I have one, one question.
So, okay, so I do have two people signed up to speak on this item, so I'm going to have, first, I've got Nicole Calderon.
Hello, my name is Nicole Calderon, I live at 305 Mitchell. Speaking on the Development Corporation, real quick, just for clarification, if somebody can clarify for me, the LGC that was spooked, is that the same thing as LDC? Yes. Thank you. So I wanted to speak on the legality of the creation of this corporation. Mike kind of hit upon it, but my question is, when did council get presented with this? When did council vote to approve the creation of this development corporation? When was council presented with the bylaws? I'm guessing they weren't? And the appointments of officers and the vote on those, the nomination and the vote on the officers? So I'd like to know when that was, because when I look back through the minutes, I don't see it, and is this another one of those situations, if you don't approve it, something, some adverse consequence will happen? I'm good with time, right? I can see you for a minute. The other thing that I wanted to mention was that this CDC, or I'm sorry, LDC has already purchased the land, correct, back in July? Did they bring that before council to get that approved, like you're doing today with, with this, this item? That's my question. So I'm questioning the legality and the authority of this development corporation. Thank you.
Next, I have Robin Sutton.
Robin Sutton, 505 East Street, thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. I have the same concern that Nicole does. I spent my entire day reading through minutes and agenda items. There's no, who appointed this board? We have three individuals on council that serve on both River Creek and Cottonwood, and they're privy to information nobody else is privy to. I want to know how we bought land, as well as Nicole does. I want to know why there are three council members on this board. The citizens deserve to know why, and y'all are going to be able to vote on this. That doesn't make sense to me, and again, I'm a rookie, I've been here maybe four months, and actually, I'm kind of enjoying it, to be honest. So in regards to Perfect Game, we have no infrastructure in that area to support construction trucks. Where are they, how are they going to get there? This is the same question I've been bringing up about Durango. How are they going to get there? How are they going to impact the people that already live there?
You're, you're speaking on 6B, which is Cottonwood Development Corporation, so your comments need to stay specific to that agenda.
Okay. So I want to know how many businesses are under contract for the co-op too? You know, I, I mean, these are just, maybe I should have brought it up in public comment.
Again.
So, again, with this individual item, we're paying for more attorneys. We're tired of being lied to. He was here yesterday, I saw him. Nobody trusts the city anymore. We're being lied to, and all we're hearing is kind of sort of maybe.
Your comment, you're, you're on the agenda, item 6B is the Cottonwood Development Corporation, that's what the comments need to relate to.
Okay, um, 7-3, I looked up 11D, there were no minutes. So somebody is picking and choosing what goes in the minutes, thank you.
I will open up to comments and questions for the council.
I just had one question. So when Cottonwood bought the land from the city on July 22nd, I don't remember coming from the city, which I guess is fine, I, I don't know, but this next land purchase from the city, we're looking for bids, or that we want the corporation to submit a bid to the city. So my question is, what's different on this land transaction than the previous one, to where they didn't have to submit a bid, but this one we do?
So the Cottonwood Development Corporation has authority to acquire and sell land, whereas the city has a different process it has to follow under the statute. So the city acquired the 72 acres, which very similar to when the city acquired the 25-plus acres on the co-op. In order to convey the property, to go through development process on the acreage that the city acquired, which is the 72 acres, we have to go through the same legal process that we did with the co-op, which is required by law to do a two-week adversary, and to declare publicly that the property is going to be used for development. That's, that process is required, that's, you know, so that's the process that we're asking to be, you know, jump-started and moved to, to allow all this development to happen. So it's, it's two separate parcel, two separate processes because of the statutory authority that each of the entities, you, you heard the attorney's grievance trial say earlier that these are two separate corporations, so there's two separate ones. In terms of the questions about the authorization of the structure, in terms of the creation of the local government corporation, that's a question for a city attorney, and we obviously rely on their advice on, on these kinds of issues.
Okay, so July 21st, Cottonwood met, that was a Sunday morning meeting, they met to buy land from the city of Hutto. July 22nd, Hutto closes on 50 acres.
Did they buy from the city? I thought they bought.
No, they bought from the city, we'll call it the Weiss, the Weissland.
Okay.
So the city buys the land from the Weiss family.
Let me, let me clarify that, if you, if you might, I'm trying to follow you, the, and you might want to speak about this too, Bill, but effectively, Cottonwood Development Corporation purchased land from the farmer, not from the city. They closed on that land.
I'm going to interrupt you, but that's not how it happened, because I've got the deed, so I'm more happy to share the deed.
Again, I rely on the turn, city attorney, sure. So. Here's the question, I'll patch it down to deeds.
The way the deeds are recorded, city of Hutto bought land from the Weiss family. Then later that day, minutes later, I'm sure, Cottonwood Creek then took ownership of the land, 4.516 million, we'll call it, and then later that day, minutes later, the next recording, the Cottonwood Creek got a loan from Butler Equity Holdings for the land.
Yeah, so that's, that's, so the city council authorized, based off my understanding from the city attorney, authorized me as the city manager to acquire land. We moved forward to do that. The acquisition of that had to be done through the city in order to allow for the Weiss to take advantage of a, I believe it's 1033 bill? 1034? You know, a tax deferment program, which helps the property owner. It allows for them to have more time to defer their taxes. So we, we structured it that way. The city attorney indicated to me that I had the authority to sign that structure that way. So we acquired it, and then we then turned around, they call it a simultaneous close, we then turned around and then sold it to the Development Corporation. Bill, you, you would, yeah?
Councilmember, there was a simultaneous closure, there was an assignment of the contract, and they simultaneously closed the, the purchase, and so it went to Cottonwood, that was the difference.
So it never was titled in the city?
It went through the city. It went through the city.
Okay, so, here's my original question. 72 acres the city owns, we want to transfer the ownership to Cottonwood, that has to be two-week notice by law, it has to have a bid process, is what Otis just said, right? And so, that's going land from the city, land to Cottonwood. So does the state law say that if it's simultaneous closing, you can skip all those requirements? Or do we still need to go back and?
Actually, you can convey, city can convey property directly to, actually, the city is allowed to convey property directly to the EDC or the Economic Development Corporation.
Without notice and bid?
Correct. You can do that. We're just choosing to do this differently here because of the private entities that's involved, and making sure that we protect the long-term structure of, of the deal with legacy.
Okay, I guess that's where I always get to why, when I see something done a certain way, and then all of a sudden it changes, the first thing that I think is, is why the change? And if it's nothing, it's nothing, but it just, I'm just gonna tell you, it strikes me when all of a sudden something changes, I go, man.
It's a legitimate question. So that's, that's what caused the change. That's the difference. I mean, the city right now, you can take a piece of parcel that you own by law, and you can convey it to the local Development Corporation without going through that process. You can also do the same thing with your Economic Development Corporation, too. We just chose to handle this one differently because of the fact of the private development that Dan's gonna be building on a property, we just wanted to make it clear that we went through all the steps so that no one can challenge.
All right.
Any other questions, or do I have a motion?
May I make a motion to table 6B until the 21st?
So I have a motion by Mayor Protem Hines, table 6B to 1121 meeting, second by Councilmember Martinez. Any other question or discussion? Call for vote.
Mayor Doug Hines?
Aye.
Protem Tom Hines?
You said Doug Hines first.
Councilmember Scott Rose?
Aye.
Councilmember Mike Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Peter Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Patty Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Tanner Rose?
Aye.
And then myself, aye. Motion passes 7-0. Next item is 7A, consideration of possible action to authorize the city manager to enter into an amendment to the Williamson County Emergency Services District Number Three, inter local agreement related to Sports, Health, and Entertainment District.
Mayor, I'm gonna recuse myself from this agenda item, they are my employer, and I don't want there to be any, any improprieties.
Okay.
Would it be wise for us to, oh, we need to wait for Tom to, please?
I mean, he can hear the discussion.
Would it be wise for us to do the same thing here as we did with the other one, where it's the city council speaking within?
No, they actually, the council in 2017 actually entered into agreement for this to happen already. In fact, the ESD board has already acted to the board approve this unanimously, you know, respecting the confines of that agreement. In that agreement in itself, it said that there would be, if we made any request to them, there were one-offs, that they would consider those one-off requests, so.
So we're not, the negotiation's done?
It's done.
Is what I'm hearing, it's done, they've already agreed to the 75%.
We would just be ratifying it.
Right, pretty much. Okay, I got it.
I do have a question, it might be for the bond council, or maybe Michelle. I was debating this last night. So if we entered into an agreement around the sales tax with the ESD, who collects it?
The ESD actually is the collector.
And they pay us, right?
Yeah, they pay the city. And then what the city would be doing under the structure is the city will then agree, and you heard Karen mention earlier, the city would be agreeing to provide those revenues through the TERS to the local government corporation.
And so where I go with this is, is back on Councilman Snyder talking about the sales tax piece and how it affects the rollback. So my question is, when we collect the money from them, it's not adding into the sales tax calculation, correct? Because it's, they're just paying into our general fund?
That's correct. So that would view as general fund revenue to the city, would not be sales tax revenue to the city, because the.
It's being paid by them.
That's correct. You just, you're just, you're looking at it as a receivable, into your general fund.
Correct.
Right. And you're not the actual assessor of the, of that particular tax. The ESD Number Three is the assessor of that tax.
So it affect, it affects their rollback and issues, because they're collecting and giving it to us, it doesn't affect ours, in theory?
In theory. However, I think, I think theirs, 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 theirs is a little different, too, but.
Yeah, I don't know what theirs is. But I just meant, you know, our sales tax number, say it's 5 million, just to make the number easy, and then say we add 500,000 to it, it's not adding to that sales tax number.
No.
On your budget reports, it's in a different fund or line item.
It would actually, the 500,000 in your scenario, coming from the EDC, from ESD, as you say, it would be general fund revenue to you, to the council. It would be, just, it would operate the same way as we do if we collect the development fee, for example, someone play, pay for a permit, or that kind of thing.
And then so, on that, the only piece of the sales tax is that 70 acres? That's the only piece of true sales tax?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and in that scenario, the piece that will have a positive impact to your rollback rate is the 25 cents that's left, because the 75 cents will be.
Correct. Okay, so that's what, I just wanted to clarify that that's how that all works structurally for the calculations, so, okay.
All right. So since I haven't seen this agreement, are they only, is the ESD only amending the sales tax parations on just the Perfect Game development, or the whole city?
Only on the Perfect Game.
Okay.
And they're, they're only doing it, and again, they're, they're only doing it as a one-off based off the previous 2017 agreement we have. So it's, they're not doing it throughout the.
And does it just map to the TERS boundary? Is that how it maps?
There you go. That's exactly it.
Yes, that's correct.
Exactly it.
All right, one last question, does this agreement have anything to do with whatever the deal is out there about someone from Galveston that's taking a job here for fire? Does this have anything to do with us starting our own fire service district, or?
No, I, I will tell you this, you know, I've had folks reach out to me about that. In order for us to start up a fire service, it would have to be a vote by the people to do that. I think in order for the city of Hutto to create a fire district, it would have to be a ballot measure that goes to the voters, and the voters would have to vote to establish a fire department, and the voters would have to redirect the tax that's currently flowing to WESD3 in order to do that. That is not a decision that I can make as the manager, and I don't even think it's a decision that the council can make, other than put it on the ballot. I think that has to be, has to be made by the voters.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's what I told people, and I said, look, go back to the budget talks, there was never even a budgeted item for position like that.
I've heard that, too.
So I said.
Yeah, we don't.
You know me, I said, well, I'll ask the question in public, and then that way there's a record, and everybody can go to bed at night.
Yeah, I appreciate the question, and no, we, we're not interested in having someone come on and serve as a fire chief that we don't even have a fire department of.
That same topic, topic comes up probably about every year and a half. And the, the way it's working, so you got, you know, your ESD, it's a taxing authority. It was established through a vote, back whenever it was established. And so the city cannot just go and say, oh, we're starting a fire department, and kick them out of the ESD. We could, but we wouldn't get anything of it, the, the ESD would still get that tax that they get for the property, even within the city limits.
Yeah.
There was also a question, and this was a year and a half ago with a different council member, well, then we get their equipment, and that's not the case. So for us to start our own fire department, we would literally have to build our own stations, we'd have to buy our own apparatus, all of our equipment, all of, all the employees. We can't just walk into ESD and say, oh, you belong to us now. Because not only do they provide within the city, because the city's part of the ESD, they've got another 60-something, I'm sure, miles outside of the city limits that is considered their district.
Yeah, I would submit to you, from an operational standpoint, if you guys wanted to do that, my recommendation, recommendation, you would be not to do that. I don't think it makes good financial sense for the city. It's just, the way we're structured, it works fine, we need to embrace that and move on with our future. Yeah, that's right.
Like I said, I just ask, I think there was an article in the Galveston News, Byron, whatever that's called, that the guy said, I'm retiring and going to work for the city of Hutto, and all of a sudden, that thing, how far away here is the Galveston?
Surprised us, too.
Next thing you know, I mean, so, okay.
Well, I think, I think to clarify, this is the sales tax that was passed outside the city limits.
Right.
That they get, that there was a sales tax that was not collected in the county. So they got that sales tax passed through the voters, which then, but anything, anytime we annex into that, they still get to keep that, that, what the unknown, part of that law that people didn't realize was, that as we annex, the ESD still gets to keep all that sales tax on anything that we annexed that was not in city limits at the time that law, that sales thing was passed.
Correct.
So what they're doing is they're agreeing to say, look, we realize that this is more money that we're gonna need in our coffer to meet the needs of our citizens, so we're willing to share it with the city. And that's basically what it boils down to.
And in fact, what they've agreed to, to that effect in 2017, when, and at that time, the city council did meet and negotiate that out with the ESD board. I handled some of the details of it, but there was a joint board conversation about that. And what they agreed to do is, they recognized that Hutto needs the infusion of sales tax in order to appropriate, appropriately grow. So they agreed that we would, any new property that we were annexed, we would get 60% of that, except if there were a specific development deal that they were asked to help incentivize and be a part of. And the one that they did at that time was the Titan development, industrial development out there. And then here, what they're doing is they're, they're incentivizing the Perfect Game transaction here with this one. So it's the same kind of action that they took on a Titan development out there, is the same kind of action they're taking on this deal here with them. Just to, they're acting as a partner with us, just to make sure that development happens in the city, really. And it benefits them, too, because all of a sudden, they're gonna have additional appraisal value, and then they do get a 10%, 10 cents assessed valuation, too. So, you know, this is property that was, you know, going to be used as farmland, or either was planned to be used as parkland, which no revenues were coming from. And so it benefits them from that standpoint as well.
So we need to make a motion to pass this?
Yeah.
All right. So Mr. Mayor, make a motion to, I guess, a motion to approve the amendment to the Williamson County Emergency Services District Three, inter-local agreement related to the Sports, Health, and Entertainment District.
So a motion by Councilmember Snyder, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Scott Rose. Any other question on the motion?
Yeah, I'd like to see the agreement before I just vote on it. You can, you can table it 21st, we can bring it to you on 21st, if that's better for you guys. Because we're planning to do that and everything else, too. I mean, if you want to do that.
I'm out, unless I'm missing it, not in my packet somewhere. I'd like to see what it states before I, because did we make any concessions, or is there anything we're doing?
Literally, no. The way that it is, is just that percentage that we talked about. So it specifies it to the district itself, and so it matches that same TERS boundary. And then it also just says that, you know, as Mayor was talking about, that it was applicable for any additional area that was annexed after the date of that agreement. So what it does is just take what was that, 60 and 40 in the previous agreement, and change it to the 7525 that was already approved and greeted upon by the ESD district, and puts that within the boundary of the TERS. So the same project boundary map that you've seen, that's what makes it applicable. Right now, we're just kind of cleaning that up and informing that, and so that's why it's not in your package at this time.
Yeah, I was gonna tell you, I haven't seen the agreement yet.
Yes, exactly. We're still working on.
I know Bill was talking with their lawyer to draft it, so I think we should probably just make sure it's included in the council packet on the 21st.
Do you want to table it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to see it before I vote. I can tell you I'm gonna vote on it if I don't see it.
So are you withdrawing your motion?
I'll withdraw my motion.
You agree to, or you agree to withdraw the motion?
Yep.
So motion's withdrawn.
So can we just take no action since it's already on the 21st, or do we have to take an action?
We need to table it.
Oh, all right, motion to table it till the 21st, it's already on there, right?
Motion to table, please.
So we have motion tabled by Councilmember Tanner Rose, second by Councilmember Martinez. Call for vote.
Mayor Doug Gull?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott Rose?
Aye.
Councilmember Mike Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Peter Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Patty Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Tanner Rose?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Mike, can you get?
Mayor, I think you need to call in a meeting as well.
Okay.
Recede it.
Well, I was gonna say, recess, or what I'd like to do, I'll wait till Hines gets here, but. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to table 7C, council training session to a later date, and I'd like to have it at a date when our boards and commission members will have ample time to go as well, so that we can kind of all learn together.
I guess, we'll have to find another date that we can have you come and.
Oh, do we have somebody who came specially just for this?
Yeah, she did come for this training. Well, I have a motion to table, do I have a, I guess you said.
I got a second, because I asked a question. I need to quit asking a question.
How long is, can I just ask how long the training is, or, well, how long your, the average or expected time it takes to get through your training?
I'm Dottie Colombo, I'm with the Borquez Law Firm, we've had a contract with the city for training, we recently did your PIA training yesterday. I, in my background, I have a master's degree in education, so all of my trainings are as long or as short as you need them to be.
That's gonna be a long one.
I have at the end, you know, several things, if it runs longer. My recommendation is, is if you want to include your boards and commissions, I can, you can pass out your presentation for study, and then I can tailor it to the council, boards and commissions.
That probably would be a good thing, that we get everybody on the same page.
Well, I know we talked about inviting some of our friends over at the ISD as well for, for some of this stuff to, that they could sit in and listen as well, so it kind of do a joint venture there.
I will throw this out there, though, that quite frankly, with holidays and other stuff going on, and people's got families and activities, this probably will not happen until January now.
I think we just set a date, like, next week, set a date in January, and then that way, people can plan ahead.
Try to get it done between now and the years.
No, I, no, I agree, I just meant, let's make sure we include our friends at the ISD.
Didn't we already set this date for this training, and then a bunch of other stuff got added to it?
Yeah.
Correct. I'm fine with moving forward with it now and having another one, if you're willing to come back, and we're willing to bring you back. More training does not hurt me. That's my thought.
Yeah, I'd rather do it all together. If we're gonna do it all together, the only other thing is, is that we need to make sure that we don't have a repeat of today, where we set a training, and then next thing you know, we've got 16 other agenda items on there as well.
Yeah, I think it should be focused solely on the training and the training only.
That allows us time to ask proper questions, and.
Yeah.
So I've got a motion to table until January, by Councilmember Snyder, second by Councilmember Tanner Rose.
I was thinking it was Peter, but you can give it to me, it doesn't matter.
Oh, yeah, that was Peter, that's right.
Either way.
To include other boards and.
To include other boards.
Commissions, ISD.
Okay, call for vote?
Can I call? I've signed up.
Oh, yeah. I do have one before we vote on that, I do, sorry about that. I've got Nicole Calderon.
We apologize. Brad, you sit here, and then.
Nicole Calderon, just want to say that if you guys went ahead with the training, the video would be available, any boards or commissions or ISD could watch the video. I wanted to speak on the Roberts Rules of Order, because when I was watching the video from last Thursday, it, it didn't really strike me at the time, I mean, there was a lot going on. But I just wanted to speak to the point that when a citizen comes up to make a comment, that it's the citizen's time to talk. I was interrupted by you, Doug, Tom Hines tried to interrupt me, Otis started talking in, in the middle of my comment, trying to justify himself. And so I just want to reiterate, when a citizen comes up to speak, it's the citizen's time, and that we respect y'all's time, and. time and that we respect y'all's time and I would appreciate if you respected ours. Thank you.
So with that, I would do, call for vote?
Mayor Doug Goll?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tom Hines?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott Rose?
Aye.
Councilmember Mike Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Peter Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Patty Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Tanner Rose?
Aye.
Motion passes five two. With that being said, that's the last item on our agenda, so I will adjourn this meeting at eleven eleven AM. And now we will go into our second call meeting. And I will call, roll, so we will start this second call meeting at eleven eleven AM. Mayor Protem Hines?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Rose?
Here.
Councilmember Snyder?
Here.
Councilmember Gordon?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
And Councilmember Tanner Rose?
Here.
Next, we'll, we have pledge of allegiance. I guess we can go ahead and do that pledge of allegiance unless we want to dispense with pledge of allegiance, as we already did it earlier. So are we, is everybody okay with dispensing with that? Any city council comments? I have no public comments, so we will go into...
Hey, I have a...
Oh.
Nicole Calderon. Um, I wanted to let the record reflect that this executive session that y'all have put onto the agenda does not provide enough information to, of, inform the citizens of what you're going back there for. Um, the law does not allow for you to review reports behind the scenes, um, and some other things. So what I'm asking is that in the future, that more information be included on the agenda so we can see what it is you're going back there for and the city council can, and manager can comply with the law. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, we vote as item six, executive session. So we will go into executive session at eleven thirteen.
Well, before we go back there, I mean, on that point, it's pretty vague. I mean, I need to know, I mean, we can't just walk back there about personnel matters. I mean, are we just talking about general city personnel matter? I mean, there's just, I mean, I know, like, if one of us were gonna be discussed, we'd have to be named in the agenda item. You couldn't just go back there and say, I want to discuss personnel matters and go back there and talk about a council member, so...
Plus, as we learned, it's kind of daily affairs to be talking about personnel of the city. So I'm, call it gun shy, I'm a little gun shy to go in the back and start talking about people that I have no control or want to control.
I've already been shown up on the agenda for an OMA violation, so before I just walk back there blindly.
The Open Meetings Act allows executive sessions involving personnel matters and it recognizes that under certain circumstances, a posting just like you have is consistent with the law because to include additional data could adversely affect the interests of those involved as well as the city's interests. No, Councilman Snyder, you're not gonna be engaged in day-to-day operations, I can assure you of that. And yes, Councilmember Rose, Tanner Rose, under these circumstances, that is a legitimate posting.
So i- if a person was part of this, have they been notified to where they have, I know when I had the opportunity to go to the back and I exercised my rights to have my issues aired out into the public, does whoever, whatever we're talking about, do these people have, have they been given their right to exercise their rights to come out and they've declined them?
The people who, the, 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 this matter involves, uh, persons that are aware that the executive session is happening.
So with that, I'm going to break into, we're gonna break to executive session at eleven